... open meeting with pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll take a seat to be near a microphone and evening and welcome to our village board meeting September 21, 2017. We flipped our meetings this month. We did a workshop on the 11th and this will be our regular monthly meeting tonight. We'll do our normal business and a few other things as we go, but as usual, we do a minute approval first. In the month of August, we only had one meeting. We took vacation season ourselves. So it's just the minutes of the meeting, the regular monthly meeting of August 14th that have been circulated. I had reviewed them. Were there any other additions, alterations, or corrections?
No.
Hearing none stated, I would make a motion that we accept those minutes as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay.
Second.
A favor?
Aye.
And we could move to the money side of the world. The treasurer presented her normal report. Cindy, do you want to go through that?
Account balances, general fund, eight hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. Water fund, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars and seven cents. Trust and agency, thirty-one thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-five cents. Materials management, seven thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and eighteen cents. Decash, seventy-five dollars. Village Green, four thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. Hardscrabble, twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. Health insurance, seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and eighty cents. Capital projects is at zero. And monthly expenses, general fund, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and nineteen cents. Water fund, ten thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Trust and agency, thirty-one thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-five cents. And materials management, three thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Thank you. As far as the overview there, that looks to be on point, but going through the spreadsheet backup documents, Brent and I both saw something. We could have the treasurer, the controller. It's probably a coding situation, but it was in the Village Green.
It was...
Something was showing a bit over.
Eight-five-one-oh-point-four.
Eight-five-one, zero-point-four, and eight-five-six, zero-point-four. Numbers are switched.
Right. Let's just switch them back. Twelve thousand, right?
No, sixteen, eight-fifteen. They should have a balance of sixty-three, fifty.
What it was, something was miscoded and one budget line was shown over. Right now, we're at the three-month point, so when you go through that budget, everything should be hovering around 25%. And most of them are. That one did jump out to both of us, so it was, uh, but it had an answer and an explanation, so. And as always, other ones that are a little high are because, well, something says 100%, it's because we paid the full load early in the fiscal year and nothing else should develop there. Motion to accept the treasurer's report.
So moved. Second.
A favor?
Aye.
And then move to, let's see, police report. For the month of August, incidents, three hundred and twenty-six. Breakout was two fifty-six in the Village of Red Hook, sixty-seven in the town of Red Hook, three in the Village of Tivoli. As far as traffic tickets written, total of one hundred and sixty-six. Breakout is a hundred in the village and the town, sixty-six. The town has given a little more money toward our budget and it looks like their numbers are popping up a little bit there. Arrests were thirty-three. In this case, there's sixteen in the village and seventeen in the town. That's that report. As far as personnel, within my responsibility there, we'll go into executive session a little bit later on some things. Be it for me at this point. Mr. Trustee Trapp, are you ready to talk on planning?
Yes, sir. Oh, let me see here. I had mentioned last, um, last meeting that the Planning Federation had, um, set their fall schedule. And we have, I have circulated, I believe, it came from county planning already, but I circulated it again just to make sure everybody got it. We have a series of classes set up Wednesday, October 4th. It's called Ongoing Relationship Between Your Comp Plan, Comprehensive Plan, and Zoning Code, and it's going to be prepared by Michael Welty, AICP Senior Unit, uh, Land Use Planner with Barton and La Judas. I met this guy at some planning training, New York State Planning Federation Training, and he's a good guy, knows his stuff. It should be a very good class. Classes six to eight, uh, let's see, I don't think it says how many training credits you get. You usually get two for this and the late suppers at 5:30. Wednesday, October 18, Agricultural District Balancing Farmers' Needs and Local Concerns. This is going to be a real good one because the guru on the, uh, on the ag laws, Dr. Bob Summers, is going to be there. And this guy, if it's, if there is information known about ag and markets, this guy's the, the guy to go to. And Brian Skorlick, the Executive Director of Dutch County Soil and Water, is going to be there as well. Uh, if you go on the county federation, the Duchess County Planning Federation, uh, link through county planning, you can view the course details and registration and things like that. Or for the Planning Zoning Board members in the village, you can just talk to Lara and Lara will sign you up. Final class is Thursday, October 26th. It's a form-based zoning and a sign regulation. It's two classes, two sessions. Uh, you pay twice, so it's five for each one, so 10 bucks for both, but you get credit for the two classes. It's, it's a relatively long session. It's four to 8:30 with the dinner at 6:00. And it's at 2715 Route 44 in Millbrook, same place it always is. Uh, we're having, uh, let's see, Christopher Eastman, Manager, New York State Department of State Division of Local Government Training, and J.D. Woods, uh, from D.O.S. is going to be there and you can check all these things out. The, uh, let's see, Building Department of the Village. Uh, we had seven, uh, building permits issued, two C.O.s, two C.F.C.'s, Certificates of Compliance, four municipal searches. Three complaints were received. Uh, no planning, no zoning board meetings. And, uh, the amount taken in this past month was $2,000 even. So, um, and that's about it for me. I won't belabor anything at this point.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You bet.
Then move to, let's see, Trustee Norris, it looks like.
We had our 40th Annual Hardscrabble Day over this past weekend. I'm still getting over my cold.
Really? Did you get a cold?
I, every year, without fail, I get a cold on Hardscrabble Day. So I'm still getting over that. Main stage entertainment was provided by the New Orleans Suspects and the Funky Meters. Um, it's funny, you and I run around like lunatics, so I only know after the fact how good the day went. People have come up and been like, "It was a great day." I'm like, "Okay, thank you. I guess it was." Um, every year, this event is done with a very small percentage of funds coming from the village itself. It's mostly, uh, done by business sponsorships, uh, so thank you to them and thank you to the Hardscrabble Committee for doing it again. And thanks to Little Pickles, they hosted our kids' Scrabble area. Our sister's village, Tivoli, will be doing their street painting on Saturday, September 23rd, and Rhinebeck Porch Fest will be Sunday, September 24th. And they look like they're going to have good weather, too, for those events. Uh, looking ahead, our Village Halloween will be Saturday, October 28th from 1:00 to 3:00. With a chili competition in the morning. We're still working out the details on that. Um, and then Dog Halloween, which is brought to you by Pa's Boutique, will be Sunday, October 29th. And I believe the time on that will be 11:00 to 2:00. Um, and then Materials Management for the month of August, we paid out $1,293.34 and sold $3,685.25 in tag sales. We had 11.34 tons of garbage and 4.66 tons of single-stream recycling.
Just on, um, the event side, so our Halloween will be the 28th and that's a Saturday, you said there.
And, um, I've already started the ball rolling on social media, but if there's any merchants in town who want someone else to pass out candy, a lot of merchants will say that they need to hire someone to pass out candy. Last year, we actually had some Honor Society students come, uh, to volunteer to pass out candy so that the merchants could maintain their shops and still have the fun, and the Honor Society students had a blast. So if any merchants need people, we have people, so just contact me and, uh, we will set you up with a Honor Society student who will wear a costume and pass out candy, and it's a win-win, so. There you go.
Yeah, I'll work the chili side of it and, uh... Thank you. Then I think we could go to Trustee Lang. If you just want to do your water and any facility, then we could do streetlights later and...
Okay, yeah, well, I'll, uh, give the August water report. So during the month of August, the water treatment plant treated 5,952,000 gallons of water at an average rate of 198,000 gallons a day. The plant used 65 gallons of liquid 12.5% hyperchlorite solution to disinfect the public water supply at an average rate of 2.09 gallons per day. So just to compare this, as we like to do with, uh, for the same month last year, in August of 2016, the plant treated 7.943 million gallons of water at an average rate of 256,000 gallons per day. So compared with last year, we, uh, saw, again, a 25% reduction in treated water volume, and this is looking very consistent over the months since the water district improvements. Um, we also, just to, to round up, we sent three samples off to the Smith Environmental Laboratory in Hyde Park for bacteriological testing, and all three returned a negative result. And we have a little conservation tip, too, so I'll just run through that. So, "As the summer season comes to a close, make sure to turn off watering timers used to irrigate lawns and gardens. If a system is set up to run for 20 minutes per day and runs until November, it amounts to about 9,000 gallons of water, about what a family of four uses in that same three-month period." So there you go, then. "Switch off your automated water sprinklers." Thank you.
Can't think of too many in the Village of Red Hook.
No.
Rhinebeck Bank.
Probably some.
It's a good tip, though. Rhinebeck Bank, some of the commercial guy, yeah.
Lot of water watering.
We know, um, one, the new CVS, remember, they have built-in sprinklers, but, um, our metering picked up pretty high consumption. It took them a while to figure out the issue, but we did tell them and they did correct it. Thank you, Charles. Then, let's see, item number four on our department agenda there. Deputy Mayor Kalachek, are you ready?
Yes, sir. I'll start with the Village Green Committee Month Report. Current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts. As far as follows, community beautification, is that 4,000? Shade tree contractual with, when that, that switchover is made, will be in the hole, $6,350. There were a lot of trees that were diseased and, and underway out, so that's where that number comes from. And the Village Green checking account, 4,136.88. And just as a reminder, last meeting, we did accept the resignation of Village Green Committee Officer Juliana Pearson and, um, confirmed the appointment of the new officer of the Village Green Committee, Michael Johnson. Um, we look forward to his participation and he's been a great volunteer in the past. And there were no Village Green meetings held during the month of August. We are gearing up, however, for our annual fall planting, so we'll be busy coming up.
Do you have a date for that yet?
Um, usually in November, so we're coming close. It depends a lot on what the nursery has for us. So we try to keep flexible to the last moment. Uh, the Village Highway Department Monthly Report, um, Highway Department is currently picking up lawn and brush debris. We'll be doing that probably for a little while longer, then we'll get into the leaf picking up season, which is starting right now. So we got a lot of piles I see already on the streets and hopefully they'll be cleared and we have the, uh, the vacuum truck already do to go on that. And the village is also investigating the availability and financing options for a new and previously owned truck, and we'll talk about that later on the agenda. And no scrap metal was sold during the month of August. Uh, the total revenue generated to date for this fiscal year is $597.60. Since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of 2007, $22,809.17 has been generated. And, uh, anyone interested in donating scrap metal can contact the village clerk or the highway department, um, at 758-8600, and they will also help you by picking up the scrap metal for you upon request. The intermunicipal task force and the Red Hook Infrastructure Monthly Report. Um, a lot of stuff, but I'll try to abbreviate. A lot of this will be online, so if you want the details. Um, meetings were held on August 18th and 25th in Red Hook Village Building. Um, we did review the status of the Red Hook Sewer Project with Ed Vopelak. Um, he's the new, um, engineer from CT Mail who's replaced Robert Flores. And we also met with Dan Birmingham, who is our bond council, um, to get closer on the, on both the map plan report and also some of the requirements to close out the water project. Um, we did review the documents, protocol procedures to file the map plan report with the clerk. And that's all been taken care of. We reviewed the contents in terms of the draft easements for each property within the proposed sewer project service area. Um, we're continuing to work on that and, um, maps and surveys are being prepared right now for each property owner in the service area. Um, we discussed requirements for CT Mail to prepare an environmental site assessment and environmental diligence report on the Red Hook Common Sewage Works Corporation property before conveyance to the Village of Red Hook. Um, we also did a presentation. We, Ed Vopelak, Ed Blundell, myself, we presented the sewer project to the, um, Salkill Watershed Community, and I think it went well. We were, there were a lot of people in the audience that, I think benefited from this as well. And we reviewed the status of the conveyance of the existing treatment plant, um, with our attorneys. And we reviewed the sewer use law, which we're still reviewing at this point. Hopefully by next month, October, we'll be ready to pass it. Um, and we did follow up with the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation to inquire on the announcement of the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, grant award programs. And we have two grants outstanding right now that we submitted our applications for. One's for the Red Hook Water Project Phase Two. Um, 60% of the project cost, or $2.28 million, is being requested. And for the sewer project, 1.225 million dollars have been requested, or 25% of project cost. Red Hook Village Water Project Phase Two, again, meetings were held on 18th and 25th of August. Um, we're reviewing the outstanding items required for the closing of the bond issue with USDA Rule Development in accordance with the memo of October 11th. We're picking it off. We're getting closer. We're getting closer. We did submit, I guess, a revised Form E, number 10, and we'll be preparing a number 11 forthcoming, which will be our final one as we close, before we close it out. Um, CT Mail did follow up with Gross Electric, which is our prime electrical contractor for Phase Two. For final submission of their closeout documents, we need those before we can close on the loan. Um, we also had a conference call with USDA Rule Development on the 18th to review the status of compliance and completion of the closeout and also discuss the status and procedures for decommissioning the village's elevated water storage tank. Um, just some real quick stuff on shared things. Village of Tivoli Trail, meeting was held on August 21st in Red Hook Village Building to discuss proposed signage and trail markings in the village, so we should be getting, we have our, our, um, map board up on the information booth of the chamber in the parking lot. Maps forthcoming, and I believe they just ordered the signs, so there'll be some signs, directional signs. Uh, the Village of Tivoli and the Village of Red Hook are both destinations. Um, the Amherst Drive-Firehouse Lane intersection, uh, we did get a memo from Mark Debold from the Duchess County Transportation Council notifying us that a meeting with DOT is being scheduled. But they had also went ahead and scheduled a traffic count for Amherst Drive between Cambridge Drive and South Broadway and Firehouse Lane between Rhinebeck Bank entrance and South Broadway. These are in preparation to improve the traffic control at this intersection. Um, so we're currently gathering information and hopefully we'll have a discussion with DOT to see what we can do in a cost-effective and efficient way. Um, the intermunicipal task force, um, I'm a member representing the Village of Red Hook. The task force met on August 4th, 11th, 25th at the Red Hook Town Hall. Um, we reviewed the proposed food truck, pushcart, and stand zoning amendments. This is for the town of Red Hook. Um, this is permitting small, medium, and large, and also reviewed the amendment permitting small, medium, and large-sized solar energy systems in the town of Red Hook, and those were completed, and I believe the lawyers are reviewing those for consideration by the town board. Um, also, I presented the Village of Red Hook zoning map and synopsis of the village zoning code in hopes of perhaps getting some assistance from the task force on amending our zoning code. So so far, we're nowhere on that. We're still applying for money, so we need the grant before we can really seriously move forward. And one more, the Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board. There were no meetings of the CPF Advisory Board during the month of August. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of August 31st is $872,526.6. Uh, the Town of Red Hook Zoning Review Committee, there were no ZRC meetings. And the Bard College Center for Civic Engagement and Red Hook Together, Jen Norris, Ed Blundell, and myself attended the Center for Civic Engagement's First Year Welcome Picnic at Bard College at Manor House on August 16th. And this was an event to introduce students to local officials and encourage participation of the Bard College students with their local Red Hook community. So members from the Red Hook Public Library, Red Hook Community Center, the Red Hook Area Chamber Commerce, and the Red Hook Merchants Group also attended. And that is it.
Thank you. We could move into regular business. One thing to start off, it's just more of a clerical scheduling matter. When Brent was talking about the sewer use law, we're still working on that, and, um, as you can see, we're not having the public hearing tonight because it's not quite ready. And, um, we'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. But an offshoot to the discussion is, um, looking at the calendar for October, the second Monday is Columbus Day, which is October 9th, so we'll need to consider another date for our meeting. I tend to like dropping them one week just routinely rather than picking another odd day. I think a Monday night seems to work for most people, yeah. So looking up and down the board here is 16th, mostly everybody around town or in the neighborhood. So I think what we could do is, um, put a motion out that we, because the holiday moved the meeting from the 9th of October to the 16th of October, same time, same place, but different day, different week.
Just keep the second meeting for the following Thursday?
Yeah, that gives us two meetings that week.
Does happen that way? Yeah, let's leave it that way for now and see what we do. So 16th of October, all good? All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That would lead us into the sewer use law. Brent touched on it in his overview there, but, um, what we're doing is, we had the first draft and then we sent back some suggestions, recommendations. There were some formula pages that the engineers have since completed, and Brent and I were looking at it last Friday again and sent that off to council again. What we're trying to do is get it in its final format so the entire board can see that and then get a public hearing announced. I think what we do for the sake of things is consider that I would like to have it happen on the 16th of October. And I think pushing it, pushing it back a week actually helps that cause a little bit. So, um, we will, though, put a public paper announcement and notices on our boards, different things if that is happening, but for our regular attendees in the audience, it probably will happen that October 16th, but we will formally notice it once it's all set.
It actually got longer, didn't it?
Got longer, you said?
Yes.
It's, um, if you remember, the one version we circulated to you guys was, there was a page of kind of if-then statements, and, um, the if-then's have been completed with, essentially, it's the pricing and merit value parts. But, um, so it was like, okay, and then we, uh, we'll probably work on a little more tomorrow when our engineers in town.
There's a few more amendments. We just want to make sure that they're citing certain laws and directly, we just to make sure that current laws, whatever, whenever they change, we don't have to review or revise the laws. Just want some flexibility in that.
Overall, all good. It's, uh, things are moving ahead well. And a related part, the second bullet, Red Hook Commons Property Transfer Phase One. What I want to talk about here is, um, a lot of the project depends on, um, us taking ownership of the current treatment plan owned by Red Hook Commons, actually one of their subsidiary corporations. But then, um, in part of that process, we want to do, Brent and Jay and Charlie probably know, but Jen, it's an ESA, it's a phase one, it's essentially an environmental study just so we can document the nature of what we're taking. It's, we're not purchasing for money, but it's, uh, it'll be a transfer of ownership to us. So our attorneys did send me a phase one, and our plan is to work on it tomorrow with our engineers, looking at it. It's, uh, it's not as long as a one-page type length, but it's a lot of technical engineering type questions that, um, I thought we'd work with our engineer tomorrow on and get that off to everybody, but we'll probably, um, we'll do that tomorrow for sure.
I, I review quite a few phase ones for my work, so, I mean, I'd be happy to help out once we have a document to review.
Okay. And then, um, that'll be our work, what we call brainstorming Friday. That'll be one of the items we touch on tomorrow. And then, let's see, related also are the next two, but the title there is LED Streetlight Program Update and Letter to Issue. What the last part means is, we, Charlie and I were at a meeting. He and I can work this together. But part of it is, remember that 60-page, 60-page seems to be the common number here tonight?
RFP.
The RFP, um, the consortium was there and explained a little more how they drafted it and why it's so long and so forth. But, um, part of it is to get formally into the consortium, even though we've been using their assets and working with them. I do want to generate a letter. I've got the text of it and, uh, I'll get to that in a minute as we talk more. But, um, it's, it's no cost to us as far as to be a member and no, I don't see any downsides to being a member. And the consortium, just so y'all know, it's, I think they said it's a total of 18 munis, not that we saw 18 there at our meeting. Charlie and I went, went to one. When was that last, uh, was it Monday? I forget. No, let's see. I forget what day it was last week, but, um...
Monday, yeah.
It was held here in Red Hook Town Hall, which made it good, and, um, it's quite an interesting bit. It's, uh, Patricia, what's her, Courtney Strong, Courtney, Pat Courtney Strong?
Courtney Strong, yes.
And, uh, we've come across her in other energy-related projects, and she's got the nicer of a contract to help make this happen. But there's a lot of talent lined up, a lot of consultants, and it's, like we said, no, no cost us to be a member or a participant. So maybe Charlie, you want to jump in and I'll look for my notes, too, on what we did and saw there. It was, um, they talked, they had, essentially, it was a webinar they were actually presenting from that site. It was, uh, so it was a little bit choreographed and presenting a lot of good information for us in the room, plus whoever was on the webinar. And, uh, I think we all learned quite a bit, but we're pretty much into the process, and then it was good to have Charlie there, too. So you want to talk for a minute about it and I'll look for a piece of paper here?
Sure, absolutely. It was, uh, yes, it was very useful. The Courtney Strong people have lined up a number of, uh, professional consultants who, who know what they're about with the latest, uh, lighting technologies and what's out there and what works and what communities have put in and the... works and what communities have put in and the, the kind of savings that you can potentially generate by switching over from regular high-pressure sodium and other light systems to LED lights. So it looks like a great opportunity for us to benefit from that expertise and, you know, strength in numbers in, in working with other communities, other municipalities in the area as a group to be able to sort of set up contracts and services to, to make this happen. So I think it certainly sounds like we're in the right place. There's a couple of things we have to do here to formalize our relationship with the consortium. One of them is adopt this best value law, which allows us to contract for services and not be obligated to go to the lowest bidder. So you have a system, and it's a statewide program where you're allowed to contract based on technical merit and other factors as well. And, and since that's the way they've set up their contracting, the Village of Red Hook needs to adopt that best value law, you know, to be part of the project. And, you know, apart from that, we, we need to, I mean, we've done some assessment of the existing streetlight infrastructure and, you know, found out some inaccuracies with the Central Hudson inventory. I'm actually doing a sort of street-by-street inventory right now to sort of follow up on that and really make sure that our, our inventories match exactly. And then we'll be in a good place, I think, to follow through with the consortium's strategy of, you know, getting into contract and making the switch.
Yeah, like we said at other meetings, the big savings, it looks like we can do three to four years payback and really start saving some money after that, to the tune of like forty, forty-three thousand dollars a year on a fifty-five thousand dollar budget, which is huge. It's, and we've done the initial steps, and I, this is me, when I was at the meeting, taking notes on my computer or just refreshing myself. We have to do a couple of things that Charlie touched on, we'll go into more detail. And we also have to write to the utility in a template letter to let them know we're starting the process too to get them in the loop. Like we said, that RFP is still being drawn up by the group. And let's see, some of these are cryptic notes as I was listening and typing, but.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
I noticed there's a recommendation to buy a higher Kelvin.
Yeah.
Light and then put it on dimmers and then in case of emergency, how does that work?
Good question. We, we know the answer. Do you want to say it or I could?
I mean, it's, sounds like the technology's, you know, changing and getting better, you know, every few months or something. So it's, it's moving very fast, but one of the recommendations from the, the main consultant was that you can get these, these higher wattage LED lights, but you have a, they're dimmable, so you, before you install them, you can reduce the, the, the light levels.
But is that, that dimmer placed on each individual?
It's part of each individual unit.
Or can it, can it be amassed? So it said in case of emergency, I mean, can someone on their computer control?
That's the next step. I mean, you, you can have this physical ability to dim the, the lights very simply, it sounds like. But if you want to ultimately have a connected wireless network so that you can do all kinds of things with your LED streetlights, like turn them down at times, certain times of night, turn them up during particular, you know, events or something, that's, that's a little more complicated and I think would add cost to the project.
Right.
But, I mean, everything's sort of moving in that direction, it sounds like. I mean, so that you can literally sit at your desk and play with the lights.
Yeah, but, and to recap, you did pick up on something, he was recommending 50 watt and then dimmed down to like 38 seemed to be like the accepted size, size. Says it helps them last a little longer to not run quite as hot.
Would that affect the, the Kelvin scale of that as well? Would that make it?
I'm not a hundred percent sure if that would change the color spectrum.
Yeah.
And that's obviously another concern. The other plus for being able to dim or reduce the wattage is that you can buy one type of light, one wattage of light.
Makes sense.
And have that in your storehouse and not have to worry about running out of a different kind of wattage.
It's one thing we did learn that the dimming really is more of a physical thing on the head, then you put the head up, and if you want to change the dimming, you have to go up in a bucket and change it. But he did recommend, one of my notes is buy a seven-pin light versus a five-pin that is out right now, and it's, he says it's two dollars more for that. It gives you, you can set it up for motion detection if you wanted with seven pins and then gives you more dimming options in future uses. Like Charlie said, it sounds like that the remote control option is a little bit more expensive than the light package.
The technology is available if.
It's, it's, yes, and, and communities are starting to be able to use that.
It's a matter of time before that becomes affordable for the rest of us, maybe.
Sounds like it.
Seems like it, yeah.
At least it's optimistic, right?
Then, one note I put was you can also pick lights with different patterns, oval, circles. Some even said, sounded like they could be like rectangles, or I didn't get that, but it was.
Right.
Yeah, excuse my spelling error, Jay, I was taking almost like dictation in the old days, you know, like listening and typing.
I'll let you slide.
But anyway, let's see. So our process, step one is we've been sharing the knowledge pool of the consortium, and we thought we'd like to tell them formally that we'd like to be in. So I crafted a letter where we would write to them, essentially it just says, please be advised that the Village of Red Hook will be a participant in the Mid-Hudson Region Street Lighting Consortium and join in the steps to issue the request for proposal. The village has been actively pursuing a method to remove and replace our old streetlights with LED lights. The newly allowed plan for taking ownership and replacing the lights matches what we want to receive, namely, energy use improvement and cost savings. We are already working on the project and have done an economic analysis based on our data. This shows significant cost savings by moving to direct ownership of the lights and moving to LED lights. We have also provided the consortium an inventory of our current lights and can detail it further. That's what Charlie mentioned there. We gave them, we converted a spreadsheet from Central Hudson to a true Excel spreadsheet so we can play with it and work and massage it more. I've asked our attorney to update us on the merits of the best value law you require, and we'll take steps to adopt that in line with the timeframes we need to get that done. This letter will also confirm that Board Member Charles Lang will be designated to represent the village at future meetings and upcoming steps in the RFP process. So Charlie did indicate he would make time to go to these, and we could default to me if you get a conflict or something, but.
Right.
They were looking for a point of contact, and so we thought we've tasked him with a lot of the work on this.
And I think they, they wanted somebody, a representative, to be on a review panel for the responses to the RFP.
Yeah.
To be able to help manage that.
Right. Yeah. Good, so I was using text, essentially what they were conveying at the meeting and kind of morphed it into this letter. What we do is talk about here at the board meeting, if we're okay, we'll make a vote. Like I said, we're not committing a dollar or anything I can really think of. The reference to the best value is the next bullet point, and I'll explain that in a minute. I think it's good for us in general in our overall operations, not even just for this, but. So what I would like is the board to be familiar and aware with where we are in the project, and then I would just like to get some consensus in the form of some, I'll put a motion together, but something that will put this on our letterhead and send it off, and, you know, I'll sign it tomorrow. So in form of motion, I'd say that the Village of Red Hook continue to explore the LED streetlight replacement process and formally line up with the Mid-Hudson Region Streetlight Consortium. And the mayor is authorized to issue and send a letter to the consortium to that effect. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. So that leads us to the best value local law. Oh, excuse me, sorry.
Hello?
Sorry about that. Let me kill my tone here. Best value local law, I put there, we'll study and adopt it. This came up at the meeting, and not everybody has adopted it yet, but it's an allowance by New York State where you can do service contract-type purchases. And it looks like, unfortunately, the research I did since the Monday meeting, Charlie and all, was it doesn't really affect capital projects, meaning if we're doing full bore sewer water type construction or even sidewalks, I explored it. What it lets you do is you can do some piggybacking and some, which is when you work with other municipalities and cooperative purchasing and things, it's, so it loosens up a little bit, but it, it, for those out in the audience, we're held to a standard of, when we're doing procurement, we have to work with the lowest responsible bidder. And in this world, sometimes that's not the best thing because it's very hard to know how responsible they are and essentially end up with the lowest bidder, and it can be a little bit of a predicament. So if you give me a second, I'll just, look, I found a synopsis of the best value law that I did since the meeting. I reached out to Conference of Mayors and then sent info to, to our lawyer, and he said he would start working on it. But it will put us in that same process like the Sula. We'd essentially be adopting a modification to our procurement policy. So as I read it, we'll have to craft the text, circulate it to the board, do a public hearing, and then pass it so it's not, we won't do it tonight. We'll have to get together. This was a synopsis I found, it says, best value standard as opposed to lowest responsible bidder for purchase contracts, including contracts for service work, but excluding any purchase contracts for completion of public works. And that's, like I said before, that's the sidewalk, the water main, the sewer project. And essentially, it was put forth back in 11, but then clarified further in 2013. And it's essentially gets, I can circulate this, guys, it gives certain flexibility for selecting contractors, and you still have to use RFP, and none of that changes, but it says, the new law, getting down here, the new law, new law allows the use of best value for all purchase contracts and service network except those purchase contracts necessary for completion of a construction project.
Did they define best value, Ed?
Sorry?
Did they, are there parameters or some kind of definition for best value?
If I can find something for you, Brent, let's see.
I mean, you don't have to show it to me now, but I'm just wondering if that's covered in the synopsis and.
Yeah, the thing, the item I got from Conference of Mayors was hugely detailed. I just pulled that from one page there. Let me just see if I can find it.
Just to give us some, you know, some guidance on what that actually entails and.
This is competitive bidding in general. This is from a normal process. It's 18 dot fours where best value comes in, let's see. Yeah, this might be what I clipped for you guys, though. Bear with me, there's eight attachments to this thing.
It's in the second paragraph there, a little bit.
Did you see it?
Yeah. Section fourteen, fourteen. That's all right, Ed, we'll review it.
But the plan would be to have council pull together some document for us, and then we could take some steps. I don't think there was a drop-dead timeline from that meeting as far as, I think, like I said in our letter, we will take steps to head that direction and then get that lined up.
Right.
And then the other letter we have to generate, it looks like something to tell Central Hudson, we intend to move in this direction.
Right, a formal notification that we are planning this transition.
Yeah. And from the financial standpoint, we thought, really, since there's so much savings there, we would find a way to finance it and work that. So we'd talked about that a few times already. By the way, that's the story on that. It's actually pretty exciting. I was teasing McCain, I think the town's already, he was talking, I don't know if he's pulling our leg, that he's already trying to buy his streetlights. I was laughing, I think, we think they have 188 if we remember right, it was like, we were joking, where are you going to put them? We'll go do a midnight raid or something, but, but, but I don't know if they're really selling to the RFPs, they have to be installed, so. The one thing I get the sense with the RFP was, it's going to be a pretty big market they're going to go out to on that, since there's 18 munis. It won't just be necessarily a Red Hook supplier, they could certainly submit a proposal, but it's going to be, with 18, it's a pretty big project for somebody.
Bigger entities are going to be bidding on this, and so we should benefit from the, that increased size.
Right, yeah.
That should provide cost savings as well.
Economies of scale, I think, would play a.
Yeah.
A substantial role in this, but.
Yeah, so well, that's that part. Brent talked a little bit of large truck update, I think at our last meeting, we came in relatively prepared to work on, speaking of bids, we had a bid of 185,000 dish truck, which was a low bid, and it seemed acceptable to highway, but then they realized there were some components that may not be. So I did, I talked to the foreman since that meeting, and he's actually scheduled to go up to look at the truck today. I haven't heard that he made it, enough Brent knows, but he's going to take a road trip and look at the plowing side of it, just to make sure it fits. In a nutshell, the conversation I had with him, I kind of made it clear that the truck would probably be our best choice, you know, based on what we know about the size, what we need, the power, the plowing configurations it could do. So we passed that along to him, and he's going to make sure it can do what we needed to do, and that we, you know, there might be some options we don't need on some of those things that we talked about with snow plowing.
This is essentially a new truck, it's a 2018 model, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's, so we'll hear, we'll hear from Dan. We, we, the good part about this one is if it comes back fine, it's going to be ready in a month, so we can have it for this season, not, not something on a six-month order. Let's see. An easier thing here, annual court audit resolution. I put some pages, copies in your packets. The village is required every year on the village side of the world to audit the justice court. We use CPA to do that, Lori Doty, and she gave me a binder. I copied the pertinent pages. It essentially, it doesn't look at court case volume or court adjudication rates or staffing or salaries, anything like that. It's not that deep in audit. It's more, there's a high standard that judge and the clerks have to take fines in, record them, get them deposited in banks, and have it all match up. So the pages I clipped give the financials. It looks like essentially the, pages aren't numbered here. Looks like in the last year, fines and forfeit, fines and forfeitures were 113,00180, and you can see it gives cash balance at the end of the year of 10,715. So it's not that we made 113,000 dollars, it was expenses and different things go out. But it's, her auditing statement is, I think on the text pages I gave you, she says she did it. "In accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, those standards require that I plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether these financial statements are free of material misstatement." And essentially, they cleared the audit. There was one account they found was a prior judge here deceased. There was some unclaimed bail money in the account, very, very small amount of money, and the court has not been able to determine who's that, who that belonged to. And after six years, money like that reverts to the municipality. And after six years, money like that reverts to the municipality. So I put a notice to the judge today to explore that further. He said he would, but it's like thirteen hundred dollars, I think something in that range. So anyway, Cindy had provided a resolution with a number already on it, resolution twenty-two dash twenty seventeen. It's our formal wherestes, but essentially it states, "The New York Uniform Justice Court requires village justices to provide their court records and dockets to the village auditing board to be examined by an auditor and entered into the minutes of the board's proceedings. Whereas the members of the governing board have received the December thirty-one, twenty sixteen, Justice Court's financial statement and independent auditor's report, and have reviewed the annual, annual audit report in accordance with the Uniform Justice Court Act, section twenty nineteen A. Be it resolved, the governing body of the Village of Red Hook hereby certifies that they have reviewed the annual audit for the Red Hook Justice Court for the year ending December thirty-one, twenty sixteen. Be it further resolved, the treasurer of the authority is hereby directed to promptly submit to the state of New York Unified Court System a copy of said audit and a copy of this resolution." So I would offer twenty-two dash twenty seventeen as a motion that we adopt that resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? It's pretty much routine.
Just a couple typos.
In the.
Yeah, in, in the, in the first, therefore be it resolved, Village of Red Hook, Hook should be capitalized.
Capital H.
And then at the second one, be it further resolved, period at the end of resolution, second line. I mean, periods that all of them.
But on the, on the substance.
But substance, it looks just dandy.
What we would do is move forward, we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? On favor?
Aye. So we judge the judge, right?
The last item in the bullet points, one day last week, I was invited and attended Citizens Climate Lobby. And it's a new group where folks are looking at carbon emissions and trying to find ways to, to bring it down. You might remember, I think, four or five years ago on Red Hook, we had three sixty-five dot org, where that was perceived to be a max that carbon emissions should ever hit. And after that, global warming would be a major issue. Not that, even before that, it was not an issue. But unfortunately, we've surpassed three sixty-five, I think it's in the low fours at the moment. So this group is trying to find a way, it's a national group, is trying to find a way to bring it to people's attention and bring it to the federal government's attention, and ways to push people more toward green vehicles, you know, electric vehicles, solar and so forth, to reduce the use of carbon. So they're promoting and doing certain things. So we went, there's nothing right now that I'm asking us to address in form of a resolution or a motion or anything. But if you wanna check them out online in the audience too, it's called Citizens Climate Lobby. It's, they have some programs that they're promoting. And to segue a little bit, we're trying to get that Clean Energy Community Program, which is that Nicerda designation that would help us. Like we said at other meetings, with the LED streetlight, if we're four point functional clean energy community, we could have a shot at some Nicerda money to help some of that purchase cost for the LED lights. It's not a given, it's not a one for one. If you're a community, clean energy community, you don't automatically get the grant, but you'd be in the running for a grant. So we wanted to finish that four step, so while we get Charlie working on looking at streetlights, I think if you could look at that energy portfolio too and see if that's doable. And we could help you, of course, but it's, I think it's just a matter of looking at the spreadsheet. And we're moving around a lot of data now for the LED program, it's probably a lot of the same data, you know, so.
Right.
And then, let's see, I have executive session, but before we go there, we could do public comment. We have our attendees out there. We do probably need you to speak into our remote mic as far as cameraman and. Okay. I don't know that we've announced it, I'd have to think about it a minute. Yeah, we have announced the new hours and we have certain things. What we could talk about is, it's Clark Kimble who was working with Robert, and so he's not new to the village. He's part-time, of course. And what we've done is, in the prior generations of inspectors, they were open Wednesday afternoons as far as physically in the office for people to walk in. If Panda is watching and George and you guys, we've switched that to Thursday. And they're actually, we're working till six PM, we're trying to pick up some time when people are on their way home from work or after work, you know, where they can swing in and not have to take an afternoon off. So he's in the office Thursdays, two to six, and then he does inspections other days at the coordination with calendar and appointments with the contractors or homeowners. It's been working well. We got, this change happened August fourth was when we lost our prior inspector. And so we inserted Clark, and we're going ahead with that. Thank you, though. Anything else? Let's see, what I would do is move to head for executive session to talk about collective bargaining slash personnel. For the audience out there in the room, we will not come back and vote on anything or discuss anything. We'd just probably come back and, we paid our bills at our first meeting, so we would come back and sit here and formally adjourn. You're welcome to hang out, but we would, if you don't hang out, we'll stay here. If you leave, we'll, let's see, if you don't leave, we'll go in and we're in a quiet room. But, but anyway, that being said, I'd ask to move to executive session to discuss collective bargain, bargaining and personnel issues. Favor? Okay, we're just returning from executive session, and it looks like it's eight twenty-two. Is there a motion to close executive and re-enter regular session?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. And like we said before we went out, pretty much at the end of our regular business here. We've had our public comments already. I think, like we said earlier, we moved to pay bills at our first meeting of the month, so that's behind us. So the next course of action would be, as I see it, to adjourn tonight's meeting. Mr. Kowalczek, do you agree?
I do, and I would like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting.
You have to pay the bills first.
I think we did that at the first meeting.
Oh, you did?
I think we should keep going for another hour or so.
Okay.
I'd like a second on that motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.